All right, how are you doing?
Are you gonna use the gavel? I'm really excited to watch you use the gavel.
Your gavel was in on Monday, it was good.
I didn't agree with the gavel. I said the wrong words, but I used the gavel.
Is everybody ready?
Yeah, he's good.
Yes, we got the thumbs up. My three-tab gavel committee member Jess over there.
Thank you.
Greetings, everybody. Welcome to the Concord School Board, once in a while meeting of the city and community relations. I'm Barb and everyone on our committee is here. Sarah's here, Liz is here, and Jess is here, along with Terry and Kathleen from the central office. So tonight's meeting will be brief. It's more of a sort of fill-in-the-blanks meeting, so to speak. We have a lot going on with two pieces of property in our town, the middle school area and Memorial Field. Those two things overlap quite a bit, so we'll talk a little bit about that. And share some meeting minutes from two groups of people that have been meeting pretty regularly. One is the Concord Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, which is a citywide committee made up of citizens from every ward. We should have, in my opinion, more school board involvement in that, and maybe have parents from each school attend those meetings. Because so much of what we talk about involves issues that affect our schools as well, which I think we all realize when we're looking for fields and things like this. So we'll talk about those things, and then we'll set an agenda for having a spring meeting where we invite the city councilors up here to have a meeting with us, so it's a true city and school board meeting. So, with no further ado. The first thing we have here, so do you want to go over meeting minutes and stuff first, and then we can chit-chat about these things, and then talk about a spring meeting after that? All right, so the first set of minutes that you have are from the planning meeting. There've been two meetings so far at City Hall. So Jim and I are the school board members on this committee. Nate Fantasy and Jeff Foot are city councilors. Pam has come both times as well, which is good, and Dave Gill came to the second meeting. I missed that one. It was Molly's birthday, so I missed it. So, I'll go over these briefly, but I will preface this by saying, my concern a little bit when you put a committee together is they redefine what they were set out to do. So, this meeting that I wasn't there was all sorts of discussion around changing the design that was presented. Let's look at buying money from the state to move a parking lot, so then we can put a stadium over here, and then we can leave the tennis courts. So now we're sort of steering away from all the work that's already been done and paid for. You know, those site plan things that can make our citizens quite angry. And we're having conversations about looking into buying money from the state to build a parking lot. And Dave Gill did bring up a couple of times that this was not part of the plan, that the money and the funding and everything that's been set forth for Memorial Field does not include all this changing and purchasing more land. So, I don't know if you all have input on that. We were given two or three different, from my perspective as an educator, and what's gonna benefit children in Concord the most, the first thing you do is address the drainage issues, parking, and the major facility, which is the track, and whatever field is inside the track, because that can cover any field sport and track, which are, you know, big number sports. And then, you know, you go, you know, area to area, depending on money and that sort of thing. So just my concern as a member of this meeting is that we're veering off the course. We were put together to look at the project and figure out how to start, and now we're spending time talking about changing it. So, I don't know. Kathleen, do you have anything, any thoughts on this?
No, I think that's the message that I got from those that are attending, Jack and Matt, who attended on, you know, just to be there as a resource. And they did agree, you know, the money that's already been spent, or we want to do a plan, was to go over what was presented.
Right.
Which they did. They presented to you the plan and overview, and that doesn't mean there won't be adjustments to that. So I think they're gonna try to get back on track.
Yeah.
Because there's gonna be a decision that the board has to make, whether they want to spend, you know, there's a 50% cost for the, it's like, a million and a half each for the cost of the design and development. And that's the whole thing, but then they can do it in phases. Doesn't mean that we're doing all the whole thing, because that would be, you know, that's in the 20-plus million, so.
Well, and purchasing more land, you know, the sad reality is, when, if you look at Memorial Field from the air, there is a ton of land around it. There's amazing woods. I designed a cross-country course through there years ago. We ran around the cornfield. The only problem with that was when you came out onto Memorial Field, the likelihood of getting hit by a field hockey ball was big. So it didn't end up working, but there is tons of usable land that we could access in certain ways. But not to build a parking lot on it and sort of redo the entire, and this project has been for years. There was a house that, when you first go into Memorial Field, there's some property to the left of the parking lot if you're going in. And there was a house there that the city paid to move down the street a bit, because that was gonna be more parking or an entrance. And then that's been like 20 years, where the house got moved, because, oh no, we have to move the house, and nothing happened. So this isn't new behavior, or sort of new, I don't even know what to call it, around just making a project take forever. But I just worry that it's not this committee's job to redesign what we've already paid somebody to put together.
Do you have any insight into what made them pivot, or to start exploring this?
So the meeting that I was at a month ago, there was a lot of conversation around how inadequate those, the people in that room felt the current parking lot and design, and why are we spending all this money on that, when we could just put money into something? I think it was more an opinion that the drainage at the front, when all the water's in the back, and all of this in the beginning didn't make sense to them. So how that transformed into, let's just build a new parking lot over there, I'm not sure. But the gist of the matter is, the water issues exist under the parking lot and under the track, and that's why they flood in the back. It's not like you can't fix the back without fixing the front. So it's just one of those, I just think it's differing opinions on where to put the money first, and where does the water really originate from, and all of that. So I think that's part of it. And, you know, having spent hours and hours and hours at that facility, watching buses get trapped by cars and everything else, I thought the new design that we were presented with, with the circular driveway and buses, was fantastic. I don't see that it wouldn't work. And the state hospital across the street continues to be supportive around parking. They can be pissy if we don't follow protocol. I have to call upon them for some other events, but we're never told no, so I wouldn't imagine that would be any different. So I'm hoping, you know, in that city land, we had looked into that before, because it also then a Butts White Farm, you know, so it's state land. It's, some of it you can't touch, some of it you can. You know, then you have this stream, there's that beautiful stream through St. Paul School that ends up going and meeting up with Boe Brook, the water in this town. And so a lot of that is considered wetlands, so you can't, you can't, any big water manipulation could happen on Fruit Street. I don't know that it can happen back there. So, I know this doesn't relate directly to anything we do, except the timing of the project and all of that.
Yeah, and does it have any bearing on the maintenance of the fields, once the fields are established, like fertilization of the fields? Are we limited in what we can do because of the waterway?
No, 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 I don't think so. No, it's not, no, the stream that flows through isn't the cause of the water at Memorial Field. That's more like attributed to the sinkhole under Concord High. It's that sort of same water pattern.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of like how it flows.
Yeah, so are you familiar with St. Paul School at all? So you know, if you're behind the track, there's all those fields, I mean paths in the woods. And there's-
That are cross-country.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and there's a stream there, and if you walk up that stream, it goes right through campus by the library. And then there's like a dam there, and then if you keep following it, it goes to Turkey Pond. So it all flows through there, so the wetlands sort of follow that, and then, but then they tributary off, so it's just, yeah, it's puzzling.
But there's no like phosphorus?
No, I don't think, no, I don't think any of those things.
Keeping the turf, okay.
No, no. So, I don't know, it just, it was, when I read the minutes, I was a bit frustrated, because do we have to spend six more months waiting for somebody to analyze this, and then tick-tock, tick-tock, when is the middle school project happening, and when are we gonna need to share fields?
Right, which fields get our priority?
Yeah, exactly, and if there's no middle school fields and Memorial Field fields, then.
Right, like is lacrosse playing at Memorial Field right now? Do you happen to know?
I don't think anything's been going on there. It's been super wet. There was a track meet there yesterday.
It was there last night.
Yeah, but that's-
And then something the day before, well.
Yeah, so I'm not sure. There was a softball game at Rollins.
There's games going.
So they are now.
Yeah, and also using Runlet right now, too. If you drive by Runlet, you'll see all kinds of teams all over the place, lacrosse, lacrosse, and baseball are practicing.
Sorry, I'm just trying to think like where lacrosse games are gonna happen, if that's, sorry.
So what they would do is have the parking back there, and then have the big major stadium that isn't with the track, back there. So where the JV football field is now and the lacrosse soccer field, that would be the new big, wonderful-
Multipurpose.
Field sport stadium that doesn't have a track around it.
Right. Okay, thank you for helping me cement that picture.
But I am concerned that they have to move forward, because the track, it could get shut down.
It will get shut down sooner than later. I'm amazed they can use it now, but honestly.
I know, and Steve has been very careful, but it's not safe. I mean, you could be running and hit a crack with grass growing up, you know, you could get hurt. So Steve is, he's at the point where, you know, he's watching it very closely. We don't want to do that, but we're gonna, we're gonna have to.
I'm sorry, one more clarifying question. The track itself will stay in the same location, though.
That would stay, yes.
Just making sure that I understand the layout.
They would just redo it.
It would just be redone.
After they do.
Yeah, they would dig it all up, and actually they'd resize it, too. They would make it, it's an old-fashioned track. No, it would still be 400 meters, but the current track is 100-meter straightaway, 100-meter turn, 100-meter straightaway. Olympic tracks and collegiate tracks and any track that's built new now is 80-meter straightaways with a straight that continues and a 120-meter turn. So the turn's wider, but what happens is you have a much bigger space in the middle. You could accommodate a lacrosse field that way without going onto the track, because it's so much wider. Right, so, yeah, Memorial Field is an old, when tracks get redone, they're seldom four times 100. They're usually 80, 120. So it would be an 80-120 layout in the new design, which makes perfect sense.
That's so cool.
Yeah, so then you get a bit, you have more space in the middle, like you don't have to have your football team's benches on the track, because there's plenty of room to have them on the infield, and you can put, all the field events can go sometimes inside, not all the throwing events necessarily for high school, but. Right, so that would stay where it is, and they want to separate it out, not have just one stadium, but have like a stadium with bleachers for field sports and a stadium for the track.
Though, if, at the next meeting, because I'm sure you'll represent us, and just thinking about city and community relations, I think I'm more or less accurate in saying that we really do have great public support for this project, so I don't, I am concerned. Even best intentions, I guess that, but the more we get to stick to what we're, everyone's hoping for, I think this is a great way to rebuild relationships, and I'm sure you would agree with that.
No, absolutely, and I get a bit frustrated, too, that, you know, the people with the longest longevity around that spot, not just me, but a lot of people involved in it, get questioned over and over again about things that they've lived for 30 or 40 years. So it's like, wow, I know, let me re-explain why this is the way to do it, and I understand it, you know, a fresh set of eyes can often give new perspective. But, yeah, I just feel like this is just too easily hung up on, well, I would do this. And I don't think anyone agrees with buying, spending money on land. One of the, I follow a lot on, it's not social media, it's like the west side, it's like an email-based, like, social media kind of. But there's a lot of political discussion on it, and some of the biggest questions are, how do we get money back on this? So it's comparing Memorial Field to the golf course, right, and how do we make money on it? Well, the logical thing, though, is you have a, you know, you have a beautiful facility that can host events, you can make money on it. We used to host state meets here all the time, now it didn't make money, well, no, it made money for the city, because they'd turn the lights on, and we paid for the lights, and those kinds of things. But we can't host a championship event, we can't even host a state meet now, not even close. So, yeah, I don't know, but do we have community fields to make money?
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
So don't you buy a house to live in it? Not every home is an investment, it's your home.
Well, and if, yeah, our mission is different, like we certainly know what's best for kids, so.
So that jumps into the next piece of this puzzle, all things being connected, and that would be, if and when the middle school project gets underway full force and we lose playing fields at Runlet, what do we do with our middle school students? And this would have been an issue where, well, it wouldn't have been an issue at Brooklyn Park so much, because nobody would be losing anything. But, so now the problem is the timing of these two things, because the supporters of Memorial Field would like to see it done sooner than later, and then, of course, anyone that goes to school at Runlet would like to see it done sooner or later. So Kathleen had sent Dave Gill lots of information around exactly what our activities are, what fields are required for those activities, a bit ago. So I reached out prior to this meeting to ask him what were his thoughts on that. And essentially, his answer was, well, until we know the timeframe, and when you'd need what fields, I can't really answer you.
Because of the seasonality of sports.
Yeah, seasonality, and, right, and, you know, yeah, right, so if the building started in the winter, so we were gonna need a ton of spring, you know, then, you know, that would be different than if it started in the summer and went into fall, you know, different fields and parks and things like this. I do feel that sometimes a vague answer buys time, and I think that more specific information on the reality of sharing fields would be helpful for us. So, you know, it's a whole lot of discussion with not, in my mind, not really any forward movement. It's like, we're still talking, you know, woo-hoo, which is, I don't know, frustrating, so. I also know, having lived through field closures many, many times, that we also have an amazing community that rises up. We had, the last time the track was not usable was 2001, I believe, around the time Gracie was born, because I had a big belly. And we had tons of track meets at St. Paul School. They opened up, so all of our spring meets, dual meets, were at St. Paul's. Now, they have these crazy insurance policies, and everyone has to sign everything, it was a lot of work, but they were tremendously supportive of that. So I also feel that we need to not hamstring ourselves into thinking our only options are city fields. We have Merrimack Valley School District, we have Boe, we have Hopkinton, we have Pembroke Academy. Yeah, right, we have a lot of places, yeah, I mean, think about that. We have a lot of places that we could maneuver and facilitate. And once people know where they're going, you know, yes, it's gonna be chaos, but if Terry Karate sticks around, we'll be fine, because he's the master of transporting kids to multiple places. But, you know, so I feel like we need to keep that in the back of our minds as well. We can't, our field shouldn't be a fighting point for either project moving forward.
Yes, so what are the next steps?
Well, from, the next steps, the biggest next step, in my opinion, is for more citizens to come to these meetings, especially this other one I'll talk about in a minute. But to pay attention and to speak to your city councilors, because that's the, we have nothing to do with city fields, we're the school district. So next steps, citizen-wise, would be to get more involved in the Parks and Rec process, to reach out and ask questions. In terms of the city and the school board, I think next steps are to, you know, pick a date to start and move back. You know, pick a starting date for whatever the first step is, pick a date and move back. And then we'll, I think we'll stop talking about, well, why don't we redesign the whole thing and put the parking lot over here? I just think we have too much, there's no sort of timeframe.
So the project is, the council has approved the project as well?
They've approved us getting together and figuring out how to split it between the school district and the city.
But that hasn't been discussed, the splitting?
No, what's being discussed is I have an idea. Let's redo it, right, and so, so I think next step would be for me to, you know, stop being so shy and introverted in meetings.
At the next, April 22nd, okay.
Yeah, exactly, and speak my mind a bit, and say, look, we have to stop, too much is on, you know, and I think the fight to that is, if we're gonna do it, we might as well do it the best we can, well, okay, but buying more, redesigning the whole thing isn't necessarily the best we can. It's been a functional facility in its current layout, you know, for over 100 years, so. It's a swamp, don't get me wrong, but, right, so I think that's a piece of it, and then we need to, and then once, I think once that is finalized, we just need to, the school board needs to commit to, this committee needs to commit to who's gonna pay for what, and then we just need to start. And I think that's the biggest thing. The weird part, too, for people listening that don't understand, it all comes from one tax pot. That's the citizens' tax. We're all paying for it regardless, but what it does is, if the city budget owns more of it, then they have less money to do other things with. And likewise us, if we have a bigger chunk of it in our budget, it just takes a spot in our budget. So what does funding this prevent us from doing specific to the school district that isn't the city? This is where it stops being about who's paying for it, and about how dividing it up affects us and the city. Which is why school boards in the past have just pushed back. It's the city thing, we don't want it in our budget, it's not ours. But 90% of city fields are used by school activities, you know, so we can't, we can't just deny that, especially Memorial Field.
And is this meeting recorded?
I don't think so. It's in a little room in the second floor of City Hall. Yeah, and I don't know, no, I don't believe that it is. Pam has come to a couple of them, so I don't know if she's gonna continue to come or not. She's been active in these meetings, which is a good thing. She can see both sides of the issue as a board member probably better than a lot of us can, just with her involvement in government, looking at things from a bigger lens. But I feel, my personal feeling here is that I think everyone functions better if they have a deadline. So, when do we decide what each side's paying for, and let's work on that? And then, once that's done, actual work can begin.
And Barb, I know that you guys were considering a 50-50 split for design work. Do you think it's, like, can you, do you have any idea at this point if it would be similar to a 50-50 split for the actual work, or?
That I don't know. I would, part of me would say no, that it would likely fall more in the city, because of so many of the components of the infrastructure are city-related, not school-building related. So, when I look at it just as a citizen of a town, it's, you know, it's a city-owned piece of property. Yes, the school district uses it, but we don't own it. We're not on the title or the deed or anything. So I think it would be reasonable for a lot of those costs, which will be a huge piece of the project, that would fall more on the city than the board. That's just my opinion. People might hate me, but that's okay.
Right, and ongoing maintenance would likely be city as well, is that correct?
It could be. I think some maintenance happens because of sport-specific stuff, so, you know, then you get into, it's always been city. They have, you know, a lot of the people that maintain Memorial Field also maintain cemeteries and other things, you know, you have, you know, you have your grounds crew that goes to all the parks and all that, so they wouldn't leave Memorial Field out. But I also know that the folks that work at Memorial Field, the groundskeepers there, they line the fields, when there's a football game, they go out and do all that. Should that be, fall on, you know?
I think we do the fields, we line the fields.
Do we do that now? Because for years and years, it was Johnny and Kite out there doing everything.
But they do a lot of the maintenance work at the fields. They oversee all of that.
And that would, and it would logically fall on the city, because it's one of many facilities they take care of. But these are really good conversations to have as we go along, though. But I think the major thing that would be split would be the building of the facility. And then, once it's open, then, you know, and it's maintained as a city facility, and the school district participates, you know, we navigate what that might be. You know, like if something had to be replaced, okay, the turf needs replaced, well, the city, that shouldn't fall on the city alone. You know, how many city events happen on the turf field? How many nine-gazillion games that are high school games happen on the turf field? So, in those things, I think that those could be a case-by-case basis, which I think would be conversations, does that make sense? So, you know, I have no trouble as a board member saying, it's our kids', you know. It was that way with the track, the track needed to be resurfaced years ago, and the city didn't want to do it, because it was 90%, it was track meets. When you saw where the track was worn out, it was where the starting blocks were, where the, you know, you don't go up and take the starting blocks out and practice your block starts, right? So, you know, logically speaking, we would own that maintenance, and I think- Um, and I think, over the years, it's been negotiated and navigated that way.
We usually have a MOU with the city around those kinds of things, so that everybody has an understanding of what the expectation is.
Yeah, so that could be very different than it is now, but.
It might look different.
Yeah.
But remember, we do have a MOU with them.
Yeah.
Because, you know, they use our buildings.
Right.
In the winter for basketball and other events like that, so.
Right, and so, and that's the other thing, too, it's easy to get site-focused, we talked about this on the phone. Um, you know, I, I do my track camp in the summer, and when you do track camp through Parks and Rec, you get school district buses, because that's part of the back and forth. Um, the district provides use of the buses for all of their programs. Um, then when I took it over myself, I have to call and get the bus, and I have to pay for the bus, which is fine. I'm, I'm not through Parks and Rec, but that, that was an eye-opener for me, like, wow, wow, that's a, like, it's just working back and forth. Um, and so there's, there's pages of those types of things, where we offer our, our locations to them and they offer them back.
Right, you know, we've, as we said today, there's been several occasions where our bus folks have risen to the occasion and provided transportation for a significant funeral in town, and then they also did, um, when there was a fire at one of the assisted-living facilities, and they, um,
There's some buses over.
They transported people up to the hospital and.
Oh, I never knew that.
Yeah, so, um, you know, we're always ready and willing, uh, to do that, because we recognize that collaboration with the city, it's important, it's very important.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah. Yeah, they're wonderful, so, so, how do I feel progress? Well, at least we're sitting in a room together talking, at least it's actually, there's actually a committee with both sides represented, but I feel that there should be a taskmaster that keeps us from redoing the work that's already been done.
Yeah.
That would be my overall, and I, you know, I appreciate the work and the time being spent, you know, it's one more meeting, you know, sometimes that's four, four meetings a week.
Yeah.
Um, for people, um, so.
Well, that's good, you'll be there on Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for attending.
Hopefully, we'll, we'll.
No, well, it's, you know, it's at my heart.
Actual concrete details.
I've been running on that track, I remember when it was three laps and cinder, so, not that I'm old, but I do remember, I do remember, so. So I, I said, I emailed today, um, some other, this is a, this is a committee that is, I'm a school board rep, and I have missed most of these meetings, but I get the minutes and I read them over. But there's a, there's a committee in Concord called the Concord Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee. Um, and there's a citizen member from every ward, um, Ward Nine is open, so if anyone lives in Ward Nine. Um, and the meetings are wonderful, you just have folks that use our facilities and have kids, and, and, um, they meet once a month and they just go over all the projects, so I'm not gonna go over all these minutes, but we have our agenda, um, for, for our meeting, which is tomorrow. Um, so it's Beaver Meadow Golf Course stuff we'll get talked about, larger CIP projects, Terrell Park, um, fully designed and permitted, five to eight million dollars, White Park Pond Restoration, that's an ongoing swampy issue, um, that's a million dollars, right? Five hundred, you know, Kiwanis Riverfront Park, Memorial Field Complex, Blossom, Blossom Hill Cemetery Buildings, there's a road falling down in there. I'm only sharing all this because it's, it's just very easy to get caught up in what's important to you, and not realize that the same people that are fighting to get us playing fields are also navigating, um, you know, all sorts of other things, but we have irrigation at Rolf and Rollins, pool renovations at Garrison and Rollins, playground replacement on all the playgrounds, um, a new park in cemetery land, 'cause Ward Two doesn't have a pub, public park, which, I didn't think all the wards had a public park, but, I don't know. Anyway, they spent, they spend a lot, a lot of time talking about this. And at the last meeting, they spent a big chunk of time talking about lights at Keach Park, which we all know needs to happen. Um, and some concerns around the water and the skating at, at Whites Park in the winter. They talk about scholarships, you know, so, you know, unlike everyone else, they're hurting for staff. So I'm not, like, trying to pat the Parks and Rec on the back, I want people, well, I am, but I just want anyone that might watch this meeting to know that you have regular people spending hours of their time trying to figure out all the things that we want to happen. Um, and it would be good for more people to take part, because it would make the Runlet issue and the sharing of fields much more plausible to follow, is sort of what I think.
Well, Barbara, I do appreciate you sharing that, because that's a lot of, just, just knowing, you know, what's proposed is also helpful for us to know what's going on.
Right.
In kids' play spaces, right, throughout, throughout, um, and, and, you know, making sure that you're attending those regularly, because that's where you can show support for things like Keach Park lights.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Although the Whites Park lights shine right in my bedroom at night, so I'm not a fan. No, it was a, well, sorry. But yeah, no, and, and I'm always, I always come away from these meetings, um, having discovered something I didn't know. And, and I've lived here forever, so, to me, if that's, if that's happening with me, then that would be with everybody. So, which leads us to sort of our next thing, which would be putting a meet, this committee was a sort of a not, a two-meeting-a-year committee forever, it was just, one meeting was here and one meeting was there, and we just talked about the school at our meeting, and they just talked about the city at theirs. And a few years back, I think it was when Jonathan was first elected, um, we did, we decided to just, he really got it a much more viable, useful committee. So, we, um, we are to host, you know, we, we, we still wanna have the two meetings a year where one comes to the other. So Kathleen and I thought having a meeting in late spring or early summer would be, um, a good, uh, goal to set. And we can set an agenda for that, uh, we don't have to come up with a full agenda tonight, but, you know, it would be, I think it would be a good thing to have a discussion about these things together, um, and just where each side is at. Hopefully, by then, we, the Memorial Field crew would have, um, a better, a more tangible, concrete plan to share. That's what I would think. Um, is there anything else that comes to mind? Um, I mean, you all have children, elementary, middle school age, so.
I recall a couple of years back, there was a movement to make the bleachers at Memorial Field accessible for wheelchairs for the graduation ceremonies, but I don't think we ever.
No, those bleachers are in such bad.
Yeah, I don't think we ever did anything with the bleachers, so it is an opportunity, you know, if we're thinking about design stuff.
Oh, yeah, that would, they would have to be now, when you build something new, it has to be, you can't even remodel your porch without me, Osha. Like, I don't want railings, you have to have them.
And now you do.
Yeah, yeah, so, it's a little crappy.
Including a middle school.
What's that?
Including a middle school.
Exactly.
For sure.
Accessible.
Yes, exactly.
Definitely.
I know what, what they do at Memorial Field is they have designated areas set aside for people in chairs, so that they can have access at fence level and, or on the track, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
But yeah, that field is, you know, well, it's, it's paved paths now, so at least folks in wheelchairs or, or walking devices and such.
Yeah, you can get right down to the field.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but no, those bleachers are dangerous. Is there anything else that, that?
So what kind of topics would you like to put on an agenda? And, 'cause I, I would like to be able to call, um, City Manager Asbell and talk to him about it, what's good for dates. I know they're about, they're about ready to enter into their budget deliberations, right? So it's, I wanna try to catch up with Tom and see what he thinks, too, and share with him what we'd like to talk about.
So I, uh, the first.
'Cause it's give and take, they, they share and we share, it's not.
Is there anything, is there any, um, I don't know, the specific topic other than housing? Because that really affects us and what could be coming down the pike with legislation?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and how much we need housing for our families because of the costs that we may occur, incur because of that. And what's an update, what are they doing?
Right, projects that are approved, um, demographic, demographics of people, there's like five or six new big housing, like apartment complexes, are they full? Are they, are, you know, who lives there, that kind, they have that, they would have that kind of demographic information, wouldn't they?
Well, they'll have, whether the vacancy rate, I don't know if they have the demographics, but they may have the vacancy rate.
The last meeting, we went over, um, everyone's, um, facility plans, right, capital facilities plans, I'm trying to remember. I don't have my notes, tell me from last one. Um, and then we went through some wishels items, um.
But I think a quick update on, um, two, two projects, Memorial Field.
Yeah, well, obviously, the middle school.
And, and the middle school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's what I was saying about, hopefully by then, I would have a concrete report, right, yeah.
So I'm gonna put that in as a possibility, is that all right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
And then, um, certainly the middle school project, what's happening with that?
The other thing that would be helpful to know, we don't have any huge, like, gas line or sewer pipe or paving projects, but there have been times where the city has a huge project, and the timing is awful. I remember one year, Concord High, you couldn't drive to it for the first two weeks of school, kids were getting dropped off, it was a disaster. So maybe, um, in their upcoming projects that might affect, I don't think we have anything, but that's just me not knowing.
I don't know if this would, did I just cut you off?
No, no, I was interested.
Okay, I forgot, I, my brain is spicy. I don't know if this would be the right venue, I found it helpful, and a lot of people I speak, speak to found it helpful, when we discussed things that we were working on together effectively, 'cause I think a lot of people are looking for the ways that we do work collectively with the city. So like, last time, we were talking about how we work together, um, at the bus facility, like, that was brought up, right? So, and even you just mentioning the school buses, I ju, and, and helping out in funerals, I think if the teams could share some more stories of that, just to make people aware of how we do work together, um, I, I think that's beneficial for all to hear. Um, I know that sounds silly and soft, but it's, as a citizen, it's nice to see and know what's actually being out there.
Well, for instance, just this week, the Equity Committee, our Equity Advisory Committee, um, met, and Kara gave us an update about what's happening on the city side. They're doing focus groups, right?
Yep.
Um, and because our Great Schools Partnership is doing focus groups, and they wanna hear from the community, they don't wanna repeat it, so they're gonna look to join the city's focus group, so that they can hear.
That's a great idea.
Would, you know, so, we're collaborating on the Equity Advisory, I think that's probably a, a good example of a, of a collaboration.
Exactly, and I think that's just healthy for everyone to hear how we are effectively working together. Um, 'cause there is a lot of good stories to tell or good examples. Um, I would say even at, on the board level, the city council level, I know a lot of city councilors unfortunately may not even know some of the work that we do together, so it'd be great to showcase that.
Yeah, and this, that whole city council doesn't come to this meeting, I think you know that, there, there's four people, I think, that are probably appointed, I don't know if they're appointed or they volunteer, I really don't know, but they're appointed by the mayor and they sh, they come. And, and certainly this group is the group that would interact with that group, too.
Right.
Although I'm sure the mayor will be there, and Tom will be there, and I'm sure our president would wanna be there.
Yeah, yep. It was a good last time, it was.
Yeah, I thought it was good discussion, and, um, are there any other topics?
Is there anything we need to bring up with, I'm totally steamrolling this conversation.
No, good.
Is, is there anything we need, I did love that Merrimack Valley was there, too, I thought that was wonderful. Um, is there anything that we need to discuss, or at least discuss publicly, to make folks aware? I'm just throwing out ideas.
We, uh, had an emergency planning meeting.
Yeah, that's a great.
We were invited to be on the emergency, the city's emergency planning, and so Matt and I were there today. Merrimack Valley was there.
That's awesome.
Police, fire, library, every, everybody was at the table. Um, and so, but probably just an update that, that work is actually happening.
Oh, that's wonderful.
You know, yeah.
That's really cool.
I'd put that on EOP update, Emergency Operation Plan Update.
Okay, very cool. Um, so yeah, I don't know if there's anything.
You know, there's lots of occasions when we interact, 'cause, you know, Jack and I interact a lot with the city side, too, you know, with Tom and Brian. Um, Terry, Terry talks with their communication person.
Oh, that's cool.
You know, so, you know, there is, um, we really make an effort, Matt does a lot.
I was just gonna say, oh, my gosh.
With all the projects that are going on, whether it's the, the project up at the high school with the, the, um, Bowbrook, um.
Sinkhole.
Sinkhole.
Trout pond.
We're working on a project, I, I mean, they're getting ready for the play, so there's some things that they had to do for that, the fire chief and the inspector have been in, so it's, we do a lot of work with them, it's just, you know, you almost take it for granted, right?
Right, yeah.
Right, to Justice's point, I think it's good that we highlight.
Yeah, we need to highlight some bits.
Well, and Matt's always willing, too, you know, he, he bears a lot of criticism on, you know, school board things, or, you know, just because it's Runlet, but he, I'll get questions from citizens about things that are maybe loosely related, or it's just a question I can't answer, and I've never, ever had Matt tell me to ask someone else. He's always said, let me chase that down for you, and he always, he's, you know, he's just a resource, and I think people don't always realize that either. They just see him as in charge of something they do want or don't want, and, and, um.
No, he works hard.
Yeah, I did like having him at the table, that was wonderful, at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Matt was there.
At, at our city and, school and city.
Yeah, that was great, 'cause it really got to show.
Yeah, we'll be there, Jack will be there, um, Terry, we'll be there as resources, but the discussion's really between the boards. That's what it's meant to do.
Yeah.
Hmm, okay.
So, we'll prepare some things.
Right.
Um, we'll have some, either slides, or we'll prepare, um, so, to, to be ready for some of these, but I will check in with Tom to see what he thinks he would like.
Okay.
And Merrimack Valley, I'll call Randy.
Yeah, that's, that's wonderful, 'cause that's a new, that was always a very separate, we never.
Yeah.
It was nice, um, is there anything on gun safety that we should be sharing or having a conversation about? I'm throwing out ideas out there, I don't actually.
Yeah, when you think of policies that we've updated that would be.
That's a good point, we could share that we've passed that policy and that we're, we're, it is a city issue.
Huge issue.
Secure gun storage.
Yeah.
Well, maybe the city could support it, too.
Mm-hmm, right, I'm trying to think of like, what other, um, what else is?
Yeah, that's a really important one, because that goes for events that might be city-sponsored events that are using school facilities, you know.
Well, it's written right in there, if you're using the facility, and the process and the protocols that everybody goes through. But, but the most important part is the work that we do to disseminate information.
Yeah.
We already put out something this week in, um, in the Superintendent's Newsletter, um, to begin that process of informing families about gun safety.
Yeah, I saw that, though.
Yeah, it's important.
Mm-hmm.
You know, kids can be impulsive at times, I'm sure you all know that.
No.
On occasion, um, and, and you just need reminders about these kinds of things.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and anything else from the other committees that folks are talking about that we should?
Yeah, we'll never get through, just know, we'll, we'll pick the, the top five.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, I'm, this is how I process, I don't expect all this beyond, I'm just throwing ideas, generating ideas.
Right now, you have housing, updates on Memorial Field.
Let's rein it in, team.
Okay, okay.
You have, uh, upcoming projects from the city side look, um, shared topics that we collaborate on, right? If, that, um, that are effective, like, things like the Equity Committee that we're working together, uh, EOP update, um, which is really important. I, I mentioned transportation, because we have electric buses, they're helping us over at the, over at the, you know, the, um, comp, and.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that's not a bad idea, plus our van proposal to do that, and then, of course, policy.
Okay.
That's, so far, that's what you've all.
And truly, I'm just throwing ideas out there, I don't expect any of mine to be.
That's why we put it on the agenda.
Verbal processing, love it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's very good, it's healthy.
Does the city, this is how out of the loop I am, we used to have a ton of adult ed stuff at the high school at night, and then it went to the city. Do they still have an active?
Yeah, the city still does it, we still, of course, we do Adult Diploma Academy.
No, that's different, this is like, you can sign up for French, or you can sign up for cooking, or.
They do that, they take care of that.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
Where do they run that?
Out of, out of the.
Out of, yeah, for the most part.
They'll call it Dame School, out of, out of Dame School.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Oh, that's good, yeah, so that's not, that's just good information that not everybody might know about. And then there are some parks things, you know, obviously the lights at Keach, um, that's a huge piece, so many of our students live in that area that would benefit from that, but there's also the Monkey Round Playground, which was this mo, beautiful, modern thing about a hundred years ago. Um, there's this big push to raise sixty thousand dollars because it won over budget, which would be a fundraiser-type thing.
I saw that.
Mm-hmm.
So, that'll be, there's all, yeah, it's just everywhere you look, something needs fixed, and it costs money.
Well, if you have other ideas.
Yeah, yeah.
You just send a quick, shoot me a quick email, and I'll add it to this list when I talk to Tom.
Thank you, sounds good.
Okay.
The only other thing that came to mind to, to add, but I think this might, it doesn't, it's not a priority list, but it's, it's other information, I think, that we could offer. Um, I know that families get brochures and emails and things like this, but if there, anyone's like me, after a while, you stop looking at them. It's just more junk mail and more emails and.
Looking at Terry, we had the conversation all the time.
Yeah, so, I know that we have an amazing recreation department, that the programs that are offered for kids in the swimming pools everywhere, and the opportunities that kids have to do things for free at a really low price are vast compared to a lot of other communities. And I know that, I, I, I have to do some research, I emailed, I might have sent you a email about this. Like, like I do track camp, that's just through a foundation, but there's tennis camp, and that, is that still through Concord High, that used to be? Um, it might be through Parks and Rec again, there's Hams Wrestling Camp, there's basketball camp, there's, there's cheer camp. And these camps serve hundreds of kids. Um, and I know that each camp sort of gets their, the word out. But both the city and the school spends a lot of time creating programs for kids that are outside of school.
Yeah, I think Terry can answer that, we just had a conversation today.
Cause I'm all about. So we've been having a couple of different, um, conversations around communication, especially broadcast communication. Um, so one thing I'm in the middle of doing an audit of a two-week time period about how many messages are sent to families from schools. Yeah, it's kind of exciting when you look at the numbers.
Yeah.
And, you know, everybody has different practices, we've been trying to get more consistent. I think the data's, I think the data's gonna help open people's eyes about how much they really message, because it's so easy to not realize that you just sent a message, you just sent a message. But we've also been trying to put a little bit more formal structure. We're getting a lot of requests from outside groups to share information. So we put together some guidelines which have been shared with principals. Actually, the building administrative assistants now send everyone to me, so we ha, we approve it. Um, and so our criteria, um, pretty much is it has to be good for kids or families. Low cost, no cost, or if there is a cost, cause some of the camps are a little bit more expensive, uh, they need to offer a scholarship opportunity to families who need it. So that's what I've been doing this past week is saying, we'd be happy to share your camp with our families, but you need to add that scholarships are available to, you know, although, because we don't want, we want everybody to have access. So we're kind of actively in the middle of that and I, what I feel like I see happening is we're gonna kind of ride this through the rest of this year.
Yep.
And then formalize that pol, that process. How much does, time does it take for us to manage this? Because all of a sudden, somebody's like, well, I saw you saw the tennis, you shared the tennis one, so now I wanna do this. And so it's kind of snowballing a little bit.
And that's the issue, that's oftentimes I, cause I, cause it used to be quite easy. I think staff had more access to, like, I could send a school-wide email, when I tried at Concord High, I could send a staff email, so I did Barb's Track Camp staff emails all the time because I could do it. Um, it's not like, it's different, you know, it's different now. Um, which makes, makes sense. So the problem was, pretty soon the emails, people's emails were flooded with, you know, no come to my camp, no come to my, and then that sort of thing.
And so what we're gonna do is, so if Superintendent Murphy's emails that go out, we try to consolidate all of them into one email. So here's all this, like, one or two lines about what it is.
Here's a link.
Link, that's exactly it. So here is tennis camp that's available for kids five through twelve. Here's a link. And so we're not spending an extraordinary amount of time trying to take up less eyeballs, because I try to remind everybody, how often do you mostly check your messages on your phone, right? So a paragraph on your phone becomes two pages.
Right.
You know, so keeping it, keeping it tight, also keeping it accessible. Um, at this point, we sometimes do attach flyers still, but flyers aren't always accessible. So that's just, again, we're working through that. Um, but if they link to somewhere that can be accessible too. So yeah, we're working really hard to share the information, but in a streamlined manner.
Back in the day when it was paper, I can remember Gracie and I coming home with like, like, like a, like a satchel full of, what do you have, homework? No, it's like fifty camp brochures. But, you know, and that was the thing, well, you know, this camp brochure came home, so here's mine, and then teachers had to pass it out.
And if I can plug, we have, and then we also want space for things that we think as a district are really important because it gets lost. So for example, we're working on, we're gonna have a three movie series for screenagers coming up, and they're different topics. One is, um, digital media, the other is teen mental health, and the other one is substance, um, access to substances. And so those are all really, they fit in our strategic plan. We wanna make sure parents see that and it doesn't get lost in all of the other information.
Right, right.
How, Terry, how can we, as school board members, as schools, how do you, how can we share that more?
This, well, that one, you're gonna, you, you guys are gonna get, you, but, but one of the things I would like to see, I mean, we're right in the planning stages, I do wanna send home a paper flyer on that to elementary schools because that's like a really big topic.
Right.
But if we're sending also home five thousand other flyers, it's gonna get lost. Right. And so just trying to constantly evaluate that and streamline it and set some standards across the district, because an elementary might, school might do something, and then Jay Richard is kind of becoming famous for every Sunday night, right? Every Sunday night, his message comes out, people know it, he's, and when I did their audit, they don't send any other messages.
Right.
It comes, yep, he sends it out every Sunday night, you know, and that's kind of best practice these days, you know.
Yeah, well, it's predictable, they know it's coming.
Exact, that's exactly, yeah.
It's not like the third message of the week by Tuesday and now what does this one say, I'm not looking.
Well, Liz, you know, you asked what, what the board could do. Um, that's a great question, and you can take, cut and paste out of like my, my report, my, I don't do it every week, but I'm kind of there every other week now. And you can cut and paste that and say, hey, um, you know, just push out the, the screen, screenages, right, screenages. Or whatever, or a summer camp, I mean, we do have them and they're important. Might wanna remind everybody what the last day of school is, that would happen to be in my newsletter, just, so you can do that as board members on your own little sites that you all seem to have.
Yeah, Pam and Brenda are really good on their school board sites, they post and post and post.
Although I was just in the orientation and they were pretty clear, like, you should really keep your profile, like, social media profile low.
Well, that's their, their school board one, not their personal one.
But I guess even then, if I'm understanding correctly, like, you can violate very quickly.
Gotta be careful what you do.
If the four of us are all on the same post, we've now violated public, like, or having more than three board members discussing.
Yeah, right, right, cause it's not, because it's.
What is that called? I just went to an hour-long training.
You're ha, you're having a meeting. You've got, I, I have to say, from what I can see here, you guys, you guys don't do that here. I've, I've seen it in other communities.
There's a fine line though, without getting the public to know the information.
If four board members or five board members posted the same post with an opinion, now we've had a meeting, like we're all.
Yeah, if we're all on the same thread.
You're just posting information, you're not posting an opinion.
Exactly, so.
Stay away from the opinions.
Well, that, right, no, that, right.
It's, in another community I worked in, the board would literally fight in like one of the big public groups. And like, that is a vi, that is, you're, you're holding a meeting online at that point.
So Sarah, like, we have to get, a one way to communicate with the public and we have to use, so I don't see any other way without using social media in some way.
Yeah, provided it's for information only, but, like, something like screenagers, you can quickly turn to editorializing in your post and folks who comment, you know.
Be careful.
It is, that's what I'm saying.
Some people are saying, why are you wasting your time on these topics, right? That may happen, but you didn't espouse that message.
You also set certain posts to not have comments.
Oh, yeah, that's true, yeah. Not on Next, which is where.
Next, no, that's what it's called, Next, golly, look, yeah. That's, yeah. I can go down the rabbit hole at three in the morning. Not, not a good place to be. The school board met at three in the morning.
All right, so with, with that, um, yes, that's one thing we can do. Are there paper flyers made of screenagers yet?
Hopefully by next week.
That's gonna be so good.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, the timeline, we have a planning meeting tomorrow. Well, vacation is screwing up our communication a little bit, that's what we're trying to plan around that. So, but you're, we'll definitely, we're definitely reaching out to the PTOs and I can make sure we email the entire board if they wanna share that information too.
There's just a graphic that's easy to just put as a post, cause we'd all, I put that on my, I put that on my own social media too. This is a school district thing that's happening.
Something else is good too, regarding PTOs, and another way to disseminate information is to attend your, your zones, PTO meetings or any other PTO meetings, introduce yourself.
Right.
At, at CMS, I give a board update for every meeting, um, at that, and that's where we would also dis- disseminate that.
Yep. Oh, it's just a little afterthought. We're all plugged in today. All right, this is good, this is good. I just.
You're good?
Yeah, no, yeah, I am, I'm good. I just hope that going forward, it's less talking about what to do and doing what we're supposed to do.
Um, our next meeting, when is our next meeting? I don't have it off the top of my head, but it is, there is one next month. What is next month? May. So what, on the next, um, meeting agenda, can we add, um, market days?
Yes, yes, yes. Which, the ending of school bums me out, because if I could've had track camp early, it wouldn't have conflicted with market days.
Meeting for this group is May nineteenth.
May nineteenth.
That should give us enough.
It's on Monday.
Enough time to market days?
We do an executive committee at five and then at five thirty.
We have enough flyer, um, pamphlets and brochures in our box.
Lots of swag. Well, we, we, uh, produce our stuff on site for the most part.
Oh, okay, so we can get it done.
Yeah, we can even do something specific towards it.
Okay.
Nice, okay.
So I guess we keep further our next meeting, maybe we can think about what we might wanna have at a table, a booth at market days and.
Is it a board booth or just a school district booth?
School district.
I thought Cara talked about the art.
Yes.
Chalk art and stuff that we would, man, uh, man, man, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And we had a booth too at one point. You and I were standing at that booth.
Um, I think we ordered a new, it was a long time ago, but we order a booth booth. We had a tent.
A tent, yes, tent.
And I think we ordered a new one, right?
Yep, yep. And we have, um, you know, a nice cloth, tablecloth, and then we have, um, some materials, you know, um, we got a new CTE brochure, which is really nice. Um, and obviously some of the other things we have, calendars, they love to see the calendar for next year. Your annual report, so we'll have stuff like that.
One of the biggest things that honestly, the, other than out of people who don't live in Concord, the other, um, group that we got a lot of are people looking to apply for jobs here. So that maybe.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's really good.
Good, good, we did, we've done that, yep, we've done that.
It was big on recruitment. Um, didn't get a lot of people outside of that, but it was really looking for jobs.
Looking for jobs in education?
Yeah, like paras, even subs, so, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, nice. Anything else? I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
I will second the motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Only one, only one hit that time.
I want three, but it's fine.